Under order, Mary Jo, would you please call the roll?
Tony DiMarco.
Here.
Debbie Tomusko.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Belbeer.
Absent.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Barb Politzky.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Before we get started, I'd like to apologize for the late start time. We had an extended Finance Committee meeting this evening. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the start of this evening's meeting, we do have an approval for the minutes of March 28th, 2016. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
To approve: Tony DiMarco.
Staying.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes. As many of you know, Brooklyn lost one of its finest just a few days ago. Mr. Lou Changary passed away unexpectedly on Saturday, April 16th. Lou was well-known in Brooklyn for his love for his family, his city, his country, and for the children he protected each day as a school crossing guard. Lou did much better, did much to better the lives of those he came in contact with each day. On behalf of all of Councils of the Administration of the City of Brooklyn, my deepest sympathies to Fran and their children, Lou, Mike, and Tony, as well as to the rest of the Changary family. Lou will certainly be missed by all who knew him. Would you please join me in the moment of silence as we honor one of Brooklyn's best? Thank you. A resolution is being prepared and will present it to Mr. Changary's family at a future meeting. In tonight's meeting, let me go over the agenda very quickly for what we're going to be doing this evening. We do have a confirmation of two appointments. I'll buy the mayor to the University Hospital, Parma Hospital Medical Center Board of Trustees. Ordinance 2015-77 is still held in abeyance, is establishing the full-time position of Economic Development Director with the City of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2016-26 is up for third reading and adoption. This is authorized in agreement with James G. Zupka CPA to provide the audit services to the City of Brooklyn for the audit periods of 2015 to 18 pursuant authorization of the Auditor of State. Ordinance 2016-27 is on second reading. This is providing for the issuance and sale of 356,496 in notes in anticipation of the issuances of bonds to pay costs of resurfacing certain streets to be approved by City Council, together with all work incidentally thereto in declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2016-28 is also on second reading, providing for the issuance and sale of 303,504 in notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of improvements to city buildings, including parking therefore in declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2016-31 is on second reading, is establishing Section 1360.32, foreclosure filing notification of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2016-32, we will amend this evening, and Mrs. Pucci will explain that in her Finance Committee report, is on second reading. This is establishing Chapter 1362 Certificate of Inspection and Point of Sale and amending Section 1360.24 Repair of Code Violations of the Codified Orders of the City of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2016-37 is a new ordinance tonight. It's on first reading, and this is the establishment of Section 1360.33 Vacant Property Registration of the Codified Orders of the City of Brooklyn. Again, Mrs. Pucci will explain this in her finance report. Ordinance 2016-38 is establishing the position of part-time inspector within the Building Department and repealing the position of electrical inspector. And then lastly is ordinance 2016-39, is amending Exhibit A of ordinance 2016-13, providing for the compensation of the part-time and full-time administrative employees to the non-bargain agreement of the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. And once again, in Mrs. Pucci's finance report, she will explain that in more detail. We will now proceed with our council meeting. At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and well for the City of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Okay, we'll then now move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards, and we will start tonight with the Finance Committee. Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening at 6:30, and I too apologize, we did go over by a few minutes. Up for third reading and adoption this evening is ordinance 2016-26. This is authorizing our agreement with James Zupka. They provide the audit services. Even though we're contracting with them, this is still done through the State Auditor's Office. I'll review the cost once again. For 2015, it's $27,328. 2016 is $27,840. 2017, $28,320. 2018, $28,800. So that will take us through fiscal year 2018, which puts us into 2019. The next two ordinances, the notes, ordinances 27 and 28, those are on second reading this evening, as is 2016-31, the foreclosure notification. Mr. Van Kirk mentioned we're going to be amending 2016-32. Last meeting, I asked about some conflicting languages or language in two of the sections regarding property that's given as a gift. Mr. Butler has removed the word "gift" in subsection A, so we will be amending that this evening and then intend to adopt it at the next council meeting. Ordinance 2016-17, this is on first reading. It establishes Section 1360.33 Vacant Property Registration of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Brooklyn. Basically, if there's vacant property in the city, if it's residential, there'll be a fee of $200 for the first year. It will double each subsequent year with a cap of $3,200 per year. This is to identify vacant properties and also hopefully will provide an incentive for property owners not to keep property vacant. For commercial properties, the fee will be $400 the first year. It will also double each subsequent year with a cap of $6,400. Ordinance 2016-38, which is also on first reading, this establishes the position of a part-time inspector within the Building Department and repeals the position of our part-time electrical inspector. Basically, we're cleaning up the language. We used to provide an annual stipend for a part-time electrical inspector. We haven't had that in a while. Right now, we have different people who can cover for us, so we have not been paying that annual stipend, so this cleans it up. And when I spoke with Mr. Kolsar, he mentioned that we'll be paying $25 per hour. The range is from $15 to $30 per hour. Also on first reading is 2016-39. This amends Exhibit A of ordinance 2016-13, providing for the compensation for part-time, full-time, and administrative employees, non-bargaining unit of the City of Brooklyn. The mayor's proposing raising the upper limits of the pay scale for certain employees. And I'll review for you which ones. Executive Secretary, right now, the upper limit is $58,387.68. The proposal is up to $65,000. Finance Director is $88,537.28. The proposal is up to $110,000. Assistant Building Commissioner is $61,000. The proposal is up to $69,000. Property Maintenance Inspector, which is currently up to $20, the proposal is up to $25 per hour. Recreation Manager is at $70,285,028. The proposal is up to $75,000. The General Foreman is $63,847.68. The proposal is $70,000. Police and Fire Chief, right now, are both at $88,537.28, and the proposal is $95,000. The mayor did forward on to us some statistics from a lot of other communities in what they're paying the various positions, so I'm sure over the next couple of weeks, we'll all have an opportunity to review those. And just a quick thing on economic development. We don't have a meeting scheduled yet, but we are looking to schedule a meeting of the Economic Development Committee prior to a work session of council. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next up, we have Recreation Board Councilman Tansky.
Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Sure.
Brooklyn Recreation's Learn to Swim program sessions are as follows. First session, Monday morning, Friday, June 13th through July 7th. Second session, Monday morning, Friday, July 18th through August 10th. Evening session, Monday and Wednesday evenings, June 13th to August 10th. We will offer parent and tot classes, preschool classes, Level 1 and Levels 2 and 6. Swim Team Practice will take place on Tuesday and Thursday evenings from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and Friday evenings, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Meet dates will be announced once session begins. Swim Team begins June 7th and ends August 6th. Contact Nicole at (216) 316-2436 for more information about Swim Team. Registration begins May 16th for all three sessions and Swim Team. Brooklyn's 2016 Summer Learn to Skate Sessions are as follows. Tuesday session, June 7th, June 14th, June 21st, June 28th, July 5th, July 12th, 19th, and 26th. Thursday session, June 9th, June 16th, June 23rd, 30th, July 7th, July 14th, July 21st, July 28th. Basic 1, 2, 3, 4, ages 6 to 15. Power and Edges for Figure Skating Basics 5 and Up, 6:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Figure Skating Basics 5 and Up, 7:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Resident ID Car Holder, $40 plus $12 USFS fees. Non-resident, $55 plus $12 USFS fee. Parma Heights Partnership, $47 plus $12 for USFS fees. USFS fee, $12 one-time charge, September 1st, 2015 through August 31st, 2016. Register for Learn to Skate Sessions at the John M. Coin Recreation Center during regular business hours after May 1st. Brooklyn Summer Camp 2016 will be held at the Brooklyn Elementary School, 9200 Bit Off Road. The age groups for Summer Camp are 5- to 6-year-olds, 7- to 8-year-olds, 9- and 10-year-olds, 11- and 12-year-olds. Students must be 5 years of age to participate. birth certificate required upon registration for all 5- and 6-year-olds. Pricing is: Brooklyn resident fee, $275, St. Thomas More, Heritage Christian School, Parma Heights, and corporate fee, $345. Price includes a camp tee-shirt. Pricing does not include field trips. Field trips are optional and a separate fee. Pricing does not include a daily lunch. You may register for Camp Brooklyn beginning May 1st through June 1st. Please be advised that if you register after June 1st, your child will not be able to receive a Camp Brooklyn tee-shirt. Registrations will be accepted after June 1st, however, discounts will not be given for late registrations. Camp offerings include game, arts and crafts, swimming, annual picnic, Fourth of July pool party, sports, talent show, and whole camp field trips that are age-appropriate. 5- and 6-year-old age group will receive swimming instructions by a certified lifeguard. For more information, please contact Camp Brooklyn Director Rebecca Bindis at daycamp@brooklinohio.gov or call (216) 351-5334. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Monday, May 16th, in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 p.m., and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Domestic Abuse Commission Councilwoman Politzky.
Thank you, President Van Kirk. The Domestic Violence Commission met on April 20th, 2016. The commission members invited Sergeant Cindy Eschweiler to speak. She told us that the phone numbers for the Domestic Violence and Child Advocacy Centers are important for everyone to know. (216) 391-Help, H-E-L-P, is a 24-hour hotline that will connect the caller to the help they need. (216) 229-8800 will connect families to resources that are available. Write them down. Hopefully, you will never need them, but someday, a neighbor or a friend may. Anyone in a crisis situation is confused and needs helped to react. If you would like to make a contribution, send it to Domestic Violence and Child Advocacy Center, PO Box 5466, Cleveland, Ohio 44101, or go to www.dvcac.org to donate. Wish list items are also available at this site. Clothing and personal hygiene items are always needed. Human trafficking has become a big issue. Law enforcement expects activity to increase during the next few months due to the RNC Convention. Teenage girls in the vicinity will be targets. So if you see something that doesn't look right, say something. You never know when you can save a young girl or a young boy. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Politzky. Next up is the Planning Commission Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Planning Commission is, this says Monday, but it's Thursday, May 5th, at 6:00 p.m. in the Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room. There's two items on the agenda. Request from 4476 Ridge Road Holdings LLC, DBA Loving Cup Kids Academy for site plan and design approval to construct a new addition to the existing location at 4476 Ridge Road for the Loving Cup Kids Academy Child Care Facility, permanent parcel number 432-23-018. Planning Commission granted the request on December 5th, 2013, so this has expired. Under Old Business, request from LS Architects Incorporated for site plan approval for a parking lot expansion and site improvements located at 4630 Ridge Road, permanent parcel number 432-23-014. This was deferred from the July 20th, 2015, and October 1st, 2015 Planning Commission meetings. This is the former Ridge Manor, now known as Augustino's. All individuals may attend the City of Brooklyn Planning Commission meeting and have the right to comment either in person or at the meeting or in writing. City of Brooklyn Planning Commission, 7619 Memphis Avenue, Brooklyn, Ohio 44144. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next up are the reports of council tonight. We'll start with Councilman DiMarco.
Thank you. I would like to offer my personal condolences to the Changary family. Lou was a great guy. He spoke his mind, obviously, at these meetings, and I appreciate that. And probably equally as important is he cared about the job that he did every day, crossing the children and actually protecting all residents in Brooklyn, so Lou will sorely be missed, and my condolences to his family. I am gathering information to hold a Public Works Committee meeting. I do not have an exact date and time yet. One of the things that just came up between Friday and today is that our street repair program from this year, there's been a few issues that have been identified by our city engineer. We're trying to get some cost around what that may be, and it may increase the amount allocated for our street repairs this year. So once we have a better idea of what that is, we'll have a meeting to make a recommendation to the Finance Committee and also address the mayor's concern on repaving West Ridge Road. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiMarco. Next up is Ms. Tomusko.
Just a few items. I just wanted to comment. I've been, with the weather being nice, and I've got a pooch, so I walk all over the city, and I'm always driving around. And I just wanted to comment, everybody's out there fixing up their lawn and starting to plant flowers and everything, and I think that's fabulous. The nicer we can get Brooklyn to look when people drive through and are looking for new homes, the better. So I just wanted to comment on that. And one other thing that's just kind of a bugaboo of mine is the trash program. We don't pay additional for trash. It's, we have the recycling and we have the trash, and it's all outlined. The city paid to send out this really nice brochure to everybody to explain how the trash program works. And I really want to thank the 90% that are following the program. I would guess it's probably 80 to 90%, because it's really going to help us and, you know, avoid having to charge for trash collection. And I would just ask the 10 to 20% that still are not following this, if they could please take a look at this and follow it as it's laid out. It's really not that difficult to separate between garbage and recyclables, so I just am kind of asking people to please take another good look at this, because again, it's going to keep it a free service within the city if we do follow the rules and the guys are able to pick it up the way they're supposed to be picking it up. I wanted to comment also that those of us that still get The Plain Dealer, which I think is fewer and fewer anymore, I saw the thing, and they had the whole section about Fairview Park, the community, and, excuse me, I'm looking forward. I know our Economic Development Director is planning on beginning to get a little more aggressive in our marketing of the city, once we get a good plan together on, you know, what are the things that we really want to highlight, what are the things we really want to show. I had commented at the last meeting about trying to do an article in Crane's Cleveland Business, but I guess my point is, is I'm looking forward to Brooklyn being much more on the offensive in terms of bringing new business and new people into the city. I feel like sometimes we're always playing defense and waiting for, you know, the next big hit about who's going to leave, and I'm really looking forward to us doing a marketing plan and starting to play offense, because, I mean, we can say as much as Fairview Park did in this thing, and we have many businesses that have been in, excuse me, in Brooklyn for years that love doing business in Brooklyn. They're expanding and they're doing very well, so we have a story to tell. So I'm looking forward to the day when I open up both Crane's and maybe The Plain Dealer and read a thing all about Brooklyn, Ohio. So I wanted to comment on that as well. I am going to be having a Safety Committee meeting. The official public notice hasn't gone out yet, because we're kind of going back and forth. Currently, and it will be, the meeting is scheduled for May 12th at 4:30 in the afternoon, and I apologize for doing it so early, but it was just a question of trying to get everybody's calendars to come together. But this is just going to be the first of many. I wanted to get us started and sort of weigh the pros and cons versus having a meeting and getting started versus, you know, not having it at 6 o'clock, but, excuse me, I can't speak to them, but instead needing to have it at 4:30. Basically, the public is invited to that. A public notice goes out, but the public needs to let us know ahead of time if there's something that they'd like to have discussed, and it won't go on until a further agenda. Everything has to be itemized in the agenda in terms of what we're going to discuss prior to the meeting. And so my point is, you can't just drop in and say, hey, I have this concern, and we're going to talk about it that evening, but we will get it on the agenda and talk about it at a future meeting. But one thing that we are going to talk about at that May 12th Safety Committee meeting at 4:30 is the mayor asked us to look into the issue of allowing dogs at Memorial Park. People, several people had requested, is it possible that we can start letting dogs at Memorial Park? So I do want to have that be one of the issues that we discuss at that May 12th meeting. So if you have a particular interest in or opinion on dogs being allowed at Memorial Park, feel free to come to the meeting or shoot me an email beforehand. This is going to be our first meeting of the year, so I'm going to spend a little bit of time just looking back at what's been done and what are the issues ahead of us, and then try to set out an agenda for the coming year, because I'd like to have these meetings with a little more frequency so that they can be more responsive to citizens' needs regarding the safety of Brooklyn. And that's pretty much all I had today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tomusko. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. I also would like to offer my condolences to the family of Mr. Lou Changary. Mr. Changary was a resident who cared very deeply about our community, very involved in our community. He was a former small business owner. I know he was a longtime scout master. He was also a crossing guard who really took his job seriously, in fact, to the point of putting himself in harm's way on several occasions to protect their children. Mr. Changary had very strong opinions, and he was passionate about them. We didn't always agree, but I always respected that he always took the time to listen to others' opinions. Over the years, I had many, many conversations after council meetings with him. Sometimes, actually, most of the time, they were very lengthy conversations, and I always enjoyed hearing his point of view. I personally am going to miss him, and I know that he will be missed by our entire community, and I'm also keeping his family in my prayers. I'd like to thank Mr. Kolsar. Mr. Kolsar went and inspected the gully that runs behind the homes on Elizabeth Lane, because previously there had been some flooding issues that seriously impacted a number of residents over there, and he reported that it is clear of debris. And also, thank you, Mr. Tansky. I had asked at the last meeting, when we were talking about youth opportunities, there are income guidelines for the young people who applied for these jobs, and he gave me a copy of those. And I believe that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next up is Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Just a reminder, the Youth Opportunities is still accepting applications for the summer work program. If you have any questions or would like to register, go to www.youthopportunities.org. Information is also available City Hall, the Rec Center, the Brooklyn High School, and the Brooklyn Library. Again, registration closes Monday, May 2nd, at 5:00 p.m. I would also like to offer my condolences to the Changary family. Lou is a dear friend of mine that I known for many years through various unions and workplaces. He was a very conscientious crossing guard who cared deeply for all our schoolchildren. He went above and beyond when it came to protecting our kids each and every day. Lou will be deeply missed by all of us, especially myself. Lou always stood up for what he believed in and thought what was right thing to do. My deepest sympathy to all those who knew and loved Lou. Ordinance 2016-37 Vacant Property Registration. I've had numerous calls in the past two to three years regarding vacant properties not being structurally maintained and landscapes not being taken care of. This ordinance is intended to reduce and hopefully stop residential and/or commercial sites from becoming and remaining vacant for long periods of time. This ordinance will hopefully limit the amount of resident calls and complaints to council members and the Building Department having to go out on these vacant properties and notify the owner and/or cite the owner. The problem with vacant properties is that they are an eyesore for the entire community. With vacant properties, home value decreases, making our city less attractive to potential home buyers and new businesses. Abandoned buildings and homes which are vandalized and broken into is also a safety concern for our law enforcement officers who have to respond to criminal activity. The Building Department should be aware of all vacant properties in the City of Brooklyn by enforcing this ordinance. I'm encouraging all members of City Council to fully support this ordinance when it's up for adoption. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Mrs. Politzky.
I would like to talk about the Laurel Garden Club will meet at 7:00 p.m. in the community room of a fire station on May 10th, which is a Tuesday night. Our speaker will be Matthew O'Brien, who will speak on keeping bees. Even if you never plan to keep bees, you should limit pesticides and plant flowers to attract them, because bees will do their job of pollinating our food supply if you help. So think about attending that meeting on Tuesday, May 10th. And I would also like to offer my condolences to the family of Lou Changary. I didn't know him very well, kind of met him when I was campaigning and met his son and family at that time. On Saturday, though, I had the privilege of attending the mass of the resurrection at his beloved St. Thomas More Parish. At the celebration of his life, Father Bill Buhal had a thought-provoking eulogy. He said, "Lou Changary was a good example of how a husband, father, citizen, scout leader, and advocate for workers' rights should live. He planted seeds everywhere, and seeds grow when they are spread. Follow his example, and every time you're kind to your spouse, you nurture a child, you get involved in the community, or stand up for what is right, think of Lou and how he taught everyone he came in contact with how to be a better human being. It's the best way to honor his memory." Something to think about, isn't it? And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Politzky. Just a couple of things before the mayor gives her report. Ms. Tomusko mentioned the public safety membership we'll be having on at 4:30 p.m. Following that meeting at 6 o'clock, we're going to be having- Following that meeting at 6 o'clock, we're gonna be having a council work session with our Economic Development Director, and he's gonna be talking about some plans that he has, starting to put into place for the economic development of our city. Obviously, he's still fairly new here, and so he's really getting his legs underneath him, but he wants to meet with us, discuss some things that are in the works. And so obviously, those that are interested in economic development and other things that go with council, there'll be a notice that goes out, but just to let everyone know that May the 12th, right after that public safety meeting, or excuse me, yeah, public safety meeting, we'll be having the council work session. Also, it's hard to believe, but before we meet next time will be Mother's Day, and that is May the 8th, and so I want to wish all the mothers of Brooklyn a Happy Mother's Day, and make sure that you don't forget, guys, that it's Mother's Day, husbands out there. And just thankful for my mother. I don't get to see her very often, but I'm very grateful for what she, how she means in my life and what she does for me, and so make sure we wish all our moms Happy Mother's Day in the City of Brooklyn. And that's all I have. Next up is the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I'd like to repeat the sentiments about Lou Changary. I think there's gonna be a void not only in these council chambers, but on the corner of Bed Off and Ridge, where he was a crossing guard, and also on the 13th. I think we all will remember Lou with great fondness. I also have some sad news to announce, that Dick Wilson had also passed away Friday, April 22nd. Family will receive Friends this Friday, the 29th, from 4:00 to 8:00 at Bush Funeral Home on Pearl Road, and they will also have services at Trinity United Church of Christ on Memphis Avenue on Saturday, viewings from 10:00 to 11:00, services at 11:00, and lunches at Additionally, I know a lot of you have seen the council meetings now advertising on AT&amp;T, U-verse, as well as Wow. Those are up and running. The one cable channel we were still working on was Time Warner Cable. They did send us a bill for $21,000 for fiber lines. So I had a conversation with Dr. Glykoff in the school, asking if maybe we can use the fiber lines there. He agreed to that, thankfully. So we're gonna look at capping those lines that got torn during the construction and getting a little bit more of equipment, so the cost will be about $1,000. So thanks to the school for saving the city a significant amount of money going forward, and hopefully we can make that process go quickly. And our IT has already reached out to the Time Warner Cable representative about bringing them out there to cap those lines. So as soon as I hear something, I will announce that. The Brooklyn Historical Society will have a meeting on Wednesday, April 27th, at 4442 Ridge Road at 7:00 p.m. The speaker will be Kevin McGee of Cleveland Underwater Explorers, CLU, discussing and showing a presentation on the discovery of the barge Argo in Lake Erie Islands. All are welcome. Additionally, I just want to let everyone know that our Economic Development Director and I met with Team Neo. They're excited about the American Greetings property now becoming a reality and developing, so they're gonna work on a marketing presentation and get it out there to some international companies and local companies moving forward. They explain the timeline when businesses are thinking about relocating or moving. It's usually in between six to nine months. So now is the prime time where we can start marketing the property, and it can become a reality for something big and hopefully move our city in a positive direction going forward. Also, I had a meeting with Brian Zimmerman from the Cleveland Metro Parks and his team. We're looking at working with Chris Samardan of American Greetings Property, and still talking about the IKEA project and moving forward with a possible bike lane, making Brooklyn more of a desirable area and working with that property to kind of target certain businesses coming forward, and so hopefully that could be a reality. This deviates from the old concept going into people's backyards where it really didn't work out. We want something that we can actually pitch and get through our city and go forward in a positive direction. So additionally, there are a couple of jobs on the city's website, also on Cleveland.com, the law enforcement clerk position, as well as some part-time firefighters. So if you know of anybody looking, check out our city's website. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, mayor. We do not have any director's reports this evening. I just don't have any, just want to make sure, gentlemen, ladies, we're good? Okay. All right, then we will go ahead and move on with our agenda for this evening. First up, we have two confirmations for positions. I'm gonna read these letters. The first one is dated April 21st, 2016. Says, "Dear City Council, I am requesting the reappointment of John Bundy to the University Hospital Parma Medical Center Board of Directors. This is a three-year term that will expire in June of 2019. Mr. Bundy has been serving on this board for several years now and serves Brooklyn's interests well. Sincerely, Catherine Gallagher, Mayor."
Move to re, to confirm the reappointment of Mr. Bundy to the University Hospital Parma Medical Center Board of Directors.
Second.
To confirm the reappointment, Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Another letter dated April 21st, 2016. Dear City Council, please be advised that Jaclyn Patton resigned from the University Hospital Parma Medical Center Board of Directors. Consequently, I am requesting that longtime Brooklyn resident Andrea Witten to fill this vacancy. This term will expire in June of 2018. The UH Parma Board Chairman David Nedrick and President Nancy Tinsley met with Mrs. Witten, went over her past work in education, and endorsed her appointment to this board. Sincerely, Catherine Gallagher, Mayor.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I'm not gonna support this. I'm gonna abstain, and I just want to, there's two reasons. The first, and just to clarify, I'm familiar with Mr. Bundy. This is a reappointment. He has been on a long time, and I am familiar with his credentials. But anyways, the first, I know we've been talking about trying to be more inclusive and getting more people involved, not just always looking to our friends, and I don't think that the information was put out there that there was a vacancy available. My second reason why I'm gonna abstain is, I find it interesting that we're the body that has to confirm this, but we were given no background information on this candidate, but there were people from Parma Hospital given this information, but not us. So I'm not willing to support this tonight. I would like more information on it.
Make a motion to approve?
Wait, can I say something?
Yes.
The comment I wanted to make, and it's interesting that Kathy said what she did. My only issue was that the Parma Board Chairman and the Parma Board had already met with her, gone over it, so I kind of feel at this point in time that asking council confirmation is kind of a moot point, because she's already been reviewed by the Parma Board and therefore already ready for appointment. So I too am gonna abstain on this, just because of the process.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
After, after UH absorbed with Parma Hospital, there's some discrepancy on whether council confirmation is even needed for this position. Seven Hills just went through without council confirmation. Parma's still requesting council confirmation. At the time, I was sent an email by Parma saying that I did not need council's confirmation on this. Their legal team said that is up for debate, so, you know, just to make everything above board, I'd rather have the confirmation on the board seat than not. And that's why they met with the board, because they know the board, and they were looking for actually specifics and people, and they're trying to consolidate their board going forward, and they are gonna start to eliminate board members in a couple of years.
Make a motion to approve the confirmation.
I second it.
To confirm the appointment, Tony DeMarco.
Can I ask a question? Were any other council people given any information on this candidate?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
To confirm the appointment, Tony DeMarco.
Abstain.
Debbie Tomusko.
Abstain.
Kathy Pucci.
Abstain.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
I have a tie.
If you could please send her, like, her information to us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
May I be recognized?
Yeah, I did.
Yes, Mr. DeMarco.
So, Mr. Butler, I mean, I don't know if you're involved in this, can you tell us if this appointment is required to get council confirmation or not?
Mr. Chair. May I be recognized?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Councilman, I conferred with an attorney for the board at the UH Parma Medical Center late last week, and he indicated that the bylaws of the organization look for appointees who are made by the mayors of each of the founding communities with the consent of their legislative authorities. So there appears to be in other communities a conflict internally as to whether or not the executive would honor the bylaws of a private entity by seeking council confirmation. And as you heard the mayor say, it was her prerogative to ensure that she does come before you and seek confirmation, so, and frankly, I agree with that decision, so.
Okay, thank you.
And for the record, we've, I've been on council, and this is my fifth year, and we've done all kinds of appointments for different things, and I, like, Mr. Bundy was approved tonight, I approved him the last time, and I was never given any information to him either. So, I mean, the mayor does have a prerogative to appoint people. Of course, council people can abstain if they want to, but this really is not unprecedented. I will now, will now move on with the-
May I be recognized, please?
Yes.
I can tell you that every appointee that I've ever had to make a decision on to confirm, I've had the information. And I did clarify, I will tell you that when Mr. Bundy was appointed, we did get information on him, and I certainly would never object, even though it's a reappointment. If any council member was not familiar with the background of anyone even being reappointed, they have the right to ask for the information. Thank you.
Yes, that is correct, and that request could have been made at any time when we got our agenda on Thursday. Now we'll move on with ordinances. The first one is ordinance 2016-26, and this is on third reading adoption. This is authorizing agreement with James G. Zapka CPA to provide audit services to the City of Brooklyn for the audit periods 2015 to 2018 pursuant to authorization of the Auditor of State.
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-27. This is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of $356,496 in notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay cost of resurfacing certain city streets, to be approved by City Council, together with all work incidental thereto, and declaring emergency. This is on second reading.
Ordinance 2016-28 is also on second reading, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of $303,504 in notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay cost of improvements to city buildings, including parking therefore, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2016-31 is up, we're gonna amend this this evening and then put it on second reading. It is foreclosure filing notification of the codified and ordinance of the City of Brooklyn establishing Section 1360.32. Need a motion to amend.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
It's 32 we're gonna amend.
I apologize.
That's okay.
31 is, will be on second reading. Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. All right, ordinance 2016-32, this is the one we're gonna vote to amend, is establishing Chapter 1362 Certificate of Inspection at Point of Sale and amending 1360.24 Repair of Code Violations of the Codified and Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I move that we amend subsection, or 1362.01 subsection A in the third line by striking the word "gift."
Second.
To amend, Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
And as I mentioned, that is on second reading. Ordinance 2016-37 is on first reading, establishing Section 1360.33 Vacant Property Registration of the Codified and Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. Again, this is on first reading. Ordinance 2016-38, also on first reading, is establishing the position of part-time inspector within the Building Department and repealing the position of electrical inspector. Ordinance 2016-39, also on first reading, amending Exhibit A of ordinance 2016-13, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time, and administrative employees of the non-bargaining agreement of the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. And Mrs. Pucci, did you still want to?
Yes.
Okay. And we will be going into, I would expect a brief executive session this evening to discuss matters of personnel relating to the Finance Department. In that meeting will be a council, the mayor, and-
Law Director.
And the Law Director.
Law Director, okay.
Right? Need a motion to move to executive session? Yes, ma'am?
I just have one request, if I could please. This is a, kind of a procedural request. Is it possible if at future meetings, when, I went to a meeting that was very heavily Robert's Rules of Order, and I wondered if it's possible on future meetings if we could, once a motion's been made and then it's seconded, could we also just ask the question, is there any further discussion? Because we just seem to go pretty fast, and then we immediately start taking votes. And I just wonder if we could take a second and just say, is there any further discussion on that motion? It shouldn't have too much time.
No problem with that, that's fine.
Sure. Thank you.
If any time, if any, at any time, if I forget to just ask you to recognize, and we'll stop, that's no problem. Yeah, just, if I'm not looking at you, just holler.
I'll make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel within the Finance Department with the mayor and our law director.
Second.
To adjourn to executive session, Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.[1793.38]